Thank you. Good evening. It is August 12, 2024. This is the GBOS LEZ joint meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute Board Board dot six two dot three one zero and Anchorage Municipal Code one point two five Public Meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I call this meeting to order at five oh three P M. I'm Brianna Sullivan, Co-Chair and Fire Department Supervisor. Would anyone like to read the hand acknowledgement tonight?
I'll read the land acknowledgement.
Right.
The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the Indigenous Peoples of Alaska, whose land we reside on. The community of Girdwood situated between the areas known to be denied and Alu Pink. Did I say that right? Thank you. Homeland respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and grateful to be a part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples.
Thank you, Brian. Now we'll do roll call in the room with GBOS, starting on the right here.
Mike Edgington, Co-Chair and Housing Economic Development Supervisor.
Ryan Burnett, Parks and Rec Supervisor.
Thank you. And for land use?
Kevin McDermott, Land Use Chair.
Ryan Edgington's movie Land Use Co-Chair.
Okay, and if anyone else joins Kyle or Margaret, let us know, please. Any disclosures?
Yes, standard one, right of one. I'm Chair of Evemajic Girdwood, which is the petitioner for the comprehensive plan, so I ask for recusal.
Thank you, Mike. We will continue that recusal and you may be the petitioner in the room that will probably ask questions during the meeting. Thank you. We'll go on to the next bullet point. That's all. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Anyone like to make an approval of a motion to make an approval of the agenda as presented tonight?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjust the introductory agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any objections? Well, by instinct, the agenda is approved. Number one, our business is to discuss and determine action regarding the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan prior to Assembly Review in not September, so it's not going to be in September. And we can ask the petitioner for information about that. But that might ease a little bit of urgency today. And I'm not sure where we should start for our discussion, but in the back of the room was the context from, I think, when he swung over this last time? Maybe? Maybe it wasn't.
Oh, we didn't.
You haven't seen this yet? Right.
Yeah, I think this planning zoning was after our July meeting.
Yeah, yes, it was. Okay.
That's right, because it was that Monday where you guys would have met normally. Fifteenth, right?
Yep.
Correct. There we go on that list. And then the context was updated for July nineteenth for our regular GBOS meeting. So, uh, Mike, would you like to give a brief overview of where we are right now?
Yeah, sure. Always close, so.
Thank you.
I can read online. I will start with the issue that Brianna just implied. We got the tentative schedule today confirmed. And it's likely to be from the Assembly for Public Hearing on November the sixth. That is a Wednesday. Tuesday, something big is going on with state and federal elections. So the Assembly meeting is being postponed to the day after the federal state election on November the sixth. That means it will be introduced probably the previous meeting on October the twenty second. We have requested a work session with the Assembly between those two dates. So typically, that's the last, that would be on the last week of October. Work session is an opportunity, it's typically an hour long, sometimes a little longer. And it would be an opportunity for us as the petitioners effectively for Girdwood, Imagine Girdwood, possibly GBOS as well, to sort of explain what the item is, to answer a lot of questions from the Assembly, to explain context, to explain any differences between what we proposed, what Planning and Zoning or any other bodies have recommended. So it's an opportunity to discuss it outside of the pressure of the formal Assembly meeting where action has to be taken. So that will likely be the last week of October. These are tentative dates. They haven't been absolutely confirmed. There is a small chance they could be brought forward by one meeting. But I don't think that's likely. But it will not be in September. September was our optimistic, if everything goes perfectly date. At the end of September was the earliest, but it turns out to be the end of October for public hearing and November. So we would like to say just something quickly about the the context. So Planning and Zoning, if one is just giving advice, so it gives a set of recommendations to the Assembly. GBOS can do the same. Obviously, individuals can do the same. Potentially other boards or other departments of the administration of the of the municipality or the state can also do the same. It it has a little bit of extra weight in theory, but in practice, it's Planning and Zoning, again, is just another set of recommendations and suggestions. The Assembly will take an action which could ignore everything they say, could ignore everything we said. They could say, no, we don't deserve a new comprehensive plan. We should rely on the ninety five plan. I think that is unlikely, but they can act in pretty much any way they want to. So I think the main focus of this meeting is to talk about what happened at Planning and Zoning and what changes Planning and Zoning recommended. So I will go to the cheat sheet. It's on the second page here. It's table. There were thirteen suggested or recommendations that were presented from Planning Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Eleven were in the document which was filed and made available before the meeting. Two were brought up in the meeting. Out of that set of recommendations, we, as in Imagine Girdwood and the project team, decided six of those were completely in alignment with what the community wanted. In fact, one of them was suggesting from us to make some technical edits. There were five others which are basically in alignment to what the community wanted. These were, in some cases, small changes, clarifications to language, additional comments which I think were valuable. For example, planning reference number three there is to explicitly call out tsunami risk in Old Girdwood. I think that was a valuable thing to suggest. Number two E was a change that H L B is currently in the process of handing over some land to Girdwood Parks and Rec, where the parcel which the Winter Creek Extension passes through. So that was an acknowledgement of the change from a previous use to Park's use. So there were six things effectively that we completely supported. There were several which we did not. Three of those were not formally adopted as recommendations for the board from the Planning and Zoning Commission. They are the three that are crossed out. The first two, I will talk about again in a minute. There was a recommendation, they appeared to be more of a confusion between Planning and us as petitions. So the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that we have a meeting with Planning just to clarify exactly what the ask was and to clarify what we meant. That happened between Huddle and Planning a week or two ago, and that's resulted in some clarification. So I think they kind of become moot points now. The other one that got voted down was a change in from low density to mixed density in the area around the base of Aliaska Mountain and along the first couple of blocks of Aliaska Highway. We believe this comes from a misunderstanding, which is probably our fault by using the word density when we don't mean density. The difference between low-density residential and mixed-density residential isn't actually about density at all. It's about how the land is used and how much vegetation is retained, how much coverage there is of structure. It's really about how much you retain the kind of Girdwood character. Within these lots, it's not about the number of front doors. And density is generally a count of the number of front doors. So as a simple example, what's counted as mixed, a low-density wouldn't allow very large McMansions if they covered a large amount of the lot. You couldn't actually do that under low-density. You could put a fourplex or a fiveplex or a sixplex there, but you couldn't do one large single-family home. So it's actually not about density at all. And we took that point and we will make a suggestion about just changing the title of those land uses so it's less confusing in the future. So I think that that other one, two G, that was crossed out is really a was an issue of terminology. And that leaves us the, leaves us these other four. So items two A, two B, two C, and two D. I'm going to address two. Is it appropriate to go through these now? Do you want me to?
Just going to ask if anyone had any questions about anything so far I kind of do about two G. Does anyone have any question for Mike so far on those?
I have a question about two G too, but.
All right. Okay, I'll see. Mike, when you said for two G, we, so that's Imagine Girdwood with Huddle have now, you're going to re-ask for the clarification of that definition, but then that body is communicating, no?
No, not quite. Two G was a request a request from Planning to pay for change to the land use map. And when we discussed it during the Planning and Zoning meeting and during the work session beforehand, it was clear there was a misunderstanding about what the category low-density residential meant and what category mixed residential density, mixed-density residential meant. We have subsequently discussed this as a project team and realized the problem is just the word density. So we will make a proposal that in the final document, we will request an amendment from the Assembly to change the actual title from low-density residential and low and mixed-density residential to another term. We haven't decided on the other term, but it won't use the word density because that is misleading. So the recommendation from Planning, we believe, based on our discussion, was based on a misunderstanding which we caused by using poor term. So we're going to address that just by fixing that, asking and requesting a fix to that term in the document. So that was something we learned by presenting it to this body and then explaining, talking about their concerns.
Okay, thank you, Mike. So my follow-up to that is to reassure this group, do we need to mention anything about two G?
If you want to summarize changes you recommend and suggest, then I think that would be one of them. Yes, we do not, because we are now in a situation where we are not going to have to. This won't come in front of the Assembly till kind of October, November. We're not in such a rush to do this, so we don't have final language ready yet. But we should have later this month or early next month.
Kevin, do you have a clarifying?
I just wonder what term you were going to use instead of density, like coverage, because that's a lot of coverages.
Coverage is one, footprint is another, impact is another. There's some other suggestions I think the professions came up with as well.
Okay.
They're the three that I can, probably footprint or coverage.
Orion, did you have?
So, yeah, so we're getting input from, are we like asking Planning and Zoning what the best terms are? Are they part of the conversation anymore?
They are part of the conversation, but we'll, what we will do is come up with a, when we come up with something we think encapsulates it well, we'll just socialize that and we'll have that as part of a general discussion, but we're not asking permission.
Right, right. Yeah, I just didn't know they would be saying like, well, sure, you can use that word, but it actually means this in Planning and Zoning.
Right. That's the problem with a lot of these words. They have many different meanings. But density is really misleading, so we made a poor choice by calling it density.
Okay, any other questions on what we've gone over so far? Okay, then, Mike, then the next.
Yeah, I'd like to just talk a little bit about one A and one B before I go any further. So these were changes which Planning and Zoning didn't recommend changing, but they did recommend an additional discussion. So I just want, I've got some notes here I want to refer to. Back in.
And just so I am familiar is what is on the screen below this. Does that include what Planning and Zoning wrote for their resolution on the fifteenth?
I have not seen the resolution from the fifteenth because the Muni isn't, it's an Imagine Girdwood as.
I did listen to the GBOS address. I meant to send it to the GBOS.
I haven't seen anything come in. I know that Brian tried to forward it to me and before I left my office a minute ago, it hadn't arrived yet.
All right, I was just going to check if it's in here. It's.
Somebody else could share their screen with it, though.
Okay.
I could do that if.
If you wanted to.
Go back to where you were, please.
Okay, yeah. So if we go back to the items one, A and one B, one B is easier. So the two suggestions which came from the Planning Department but were not adopted as recommendations from Planning and Zoning. One was about the use of putting on a land use map, potential future parkland. The planning argument, the argument from planning was twofold. One, we described this as a planning consideration and that apparently has a technical meaning. And it basically means information which comes from previous plans. And this obviously is something to do in the future, not something in the past. And the other thing is that by putting it in a land use map, it looks like a distinct land use category. And it isn't. It's just something we may choose to do in the future and make changes in the future. The reason it was in the map is because it was a big part of the conversation and we wanted to record it. So the project team decided the best path forward there, I've got agreement with Planning. The best path forward there is we won't have future parkland marked on the on the land use category map. What we will do is create a separate map with that same information in there. Now, all of these maps, although there are separate themes in the document, they're all electronically stored in the same place and layer. So you can put them all together and create a new one on there. It doesn't matter. But what we're effectively going to do is record that as just a new map within that section of the document and take away that hashed space on the map. So it doesn't make any difference to what we're saying, it's just how it's presented. Vegetative buffers, there was a long discussion about this at Planning and Zoning. And again, I think there were some misunderstandings. Planning were very concerned how it is implemented. And that is not the purpose of this plan, to define how it's implemented. So what we will, what we agree or what we will do, and we haven't got absolute agreement from Planning. They haven't quite addressed whether they consider this adequate or not, but what we are proposing to do, and we'll not go any further, is we will remove, we'll put a dashed line on the land use map where these buffers are, so it looks similar to roads, to the future roads. It doesn't define the exact width or anything else. It doesn't make them look as if they're a land use category because they aren't. It's just a feature on the map and it will show where they are. We'll clarify that in the narrative. And then we have an updated implementation action. And we've, we've got some language for that. And I, actually, we have agreed, or the project team proposed this language. And it basically just clarifies the purpose of them. So I'll read it out loud and I can share a copy, but this is what we're proposing. So in implementation actions, it will say, prior to plating or disposal of municipal land, a property easement, parcel, deed restriction, or similar should be established through a plating action or dedication that creates a vegetative buffer between established subdivisions and potentially newly developed land. And this is in the areas identified on that. The intent of vegetative buffers contain areas of existing established vegetation. Wild wildlife corridors, visual and noise buffers between developed neighborhoods, and to maintain a natural visual landscape of the valley from elevation. The bar can vary in width to accommodate natural features. However, it should be an average of a hundred feet wide. So that's an more explanation of both the intent of vegetative buffers, which was perhaps a little lacking, and also some suggestions about how it can be implemented. And again, Planning had concerns about we didn't tell them exactly how it's implemented. Our position is we don't have to tell them how it's implemented, which could give you a menu. And it can depend, could do it the way it needs to be done in the future, whatever works. So I think that from our perspective, that seems to address the the concerns articulated by Planning, but we haven't actually got. Yes, this is fine from Planning, but that's what we're going to propose. Okay, now we're just on those last four in reddish on the screen. These are all items which the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended. Short.
So, Brian.
Oh, I'm sorry. Since we're on one A, one A specifically. So then it will come back to probably land use in future meetings as we're approving projects as a community to ensure that this vegetative buffer is being accounted for.
Yes, although any any future plan, so when somebody's developing a subdivision, they have to show it's consistent, comprehensive plan. So if this language is incorporated as we, as we want, then it will be part of the formal entitlement process to make sure that this is accommodated for. So, and this was, for example, in the Holton Hills Plating, there was a buffer created between the southern edge of the developed areas and the trail and the area just behind the school. So it's similar to that. I think Planning were partly concerned about, it didn't, we didn't really specify how it should be done. We weren't clear about whether this was meant to be a different use of land or whether it was just a feature. And there was just some confusion about the details. I think we've clarified it hopefully now.
Kevin?
Would that, would chapter nine be a better place to define that if it is, you know, it's, needs to be specific?
It should be defined as it is in the comprehensive plan, and then I agree, there should be something in chapter five that talks about, a chapter nine that talks about it when we do the update. Agreed. But this is a, this language gives you the framework of what the intent is and how it could be implemented. And then chapter nine could add details of exactly.
That's where I, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's true of a lot of the things in here. It will require an update to chapter nine.
I have one I think about following up with the final statement you made of one A, the vegetative buffers. Does it seem like Planning and Zoning will have a response to the may, it almost achieved clarification before October?
I think so. Yeah, I think so. I think, I think there was, there was, there was an ongoing discussion. I wasn't part of that discussion. But there was a discussion between the current planning and the project team. And this was the final set of language we proposed as a change we're happy with. If they want to go beyond, they may want to go beyond that. But this is where we think, we think we have addressed their concerns and met, and met them without changing what the community intends.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone in the room? Okay, back to where you left off, Mike.
Okay, so now we've got four things left. These are the fun ones. And I'm going to start with the least fun. So two C, change south, south townsite area three to mixed use. I think, I can't remember if there was a, that was actually in the other document. There is a, there is a back of this. This, I believe, is also a slight miscommunication. H L B made a comment that in the south townsite area, the land use category should follow the south townsite master plan. Now, I believe they're incorrect. It should, does not, is not required to follow a previous plan. However, what we've proposed is very similar to that. The only difference between the position Planning took, which I think they, they may have slightly misunderstood what H L B said, but it's along a similar lines. And what we took is based on the current mapping of flood zones. So the municipal watershed management team service recommended in this type of environment where we have lots of braided streams, lots of sediment flowing and all this stuff down from the mountains and lot movement as Kyle can attest to. You should not make areas within the five hundred year floodplain developable. You should keep them as basically outside of developable areas. Planning took a different opinion and recommended that everything within the five hundred but outside the one hundred year should be made developable. And H L B had a slightly different position of just making sure it aligns with where they currently have parcel boundaries. What we need in the maps are follow the recommendations of watershed management of mixed-use areas are the, are outside of the five hundred year floodplain. But are in areas which have a lower probability of flooding than that. We acknowledge that the maps we're working from date from basically the seventies and are based on precipitation patterns fifty odd years ago, which have changed significantly. So we know that all this is kind of, but that's the information we have. There is a recommendation to update the, update FEMA mapping as well. So at some point, this may be revised. So two C is kind of a small technical issue. It's about whether you take the advice of watershed management or whether you take a slightly more expansive and liberal use to to doing land use categorization. At the end of the day, it's the condition on the ground that matter. So it's, it's really how much do you trust the the maps we have now from FEMA and should you, because they're probably not completely reliable, should you take a slightly more conservative or a slightly less conservative position? So I think that's a very technical issue, honestly. I'm comfortable with where we stood. I don't think extensive, making them much larger makes sense, and I don't think that was really what was asked for. But again, that's a discussion we can have with the Assembly. It doesn't make a huge amount of difference really, because at the end of the day, you're not going to build on things which flood regularly. Two D is the Upper Valley. There was a, there was recently an opinion piece in the ADN which misunderstood this completely. Was talking about open space. We didn't propose open space in the Upper Valley. We proposed commercial recreation reserve in the Upper Valley. What that means is it can be, it's a holding position where we acknowledge that that's a viable future use and there should be acknowledgement that it's a viable future use, but there's no practical proposal. We see in the next ten to twenty years they happen. So by making it a commercial recreation reserve, as opposed to the Planning Department recommended, you take out the word reserve and it just becomes commercial recreation. So that's really the argument here about whether it's a reserve, whether it's a commercial recreation by default. There are two issues. We believe that there is no viable proposal in front of us now or feasibly in the next decade or two for a large resort expansion in the Upper Valley. So therefore, reserve is a better position to be in. And the reason it's a better position to be in is if the word reserve is there, then there has to be a change to the land use map which requires Assembly action. If the word reserve is not there, then uses can be done by permit completely consistent with commercial reserve, recreation, without any involvement of any, really any public comment to you. H L B could do that just by fiat under their administrative rules. So there is actually a big difference between commercial recreation reserve and commercial recreation around the steps that would have to be taken to do larger scale developments in that area. Now, again, practically, we don't expect this to happen in the near future. I think it's a good sign that we have something indicating that it's a suitable area and it should be something under consideration, or it can be something under consideration. But I also think it's good that we have some training mills and, and safety around that, which we would not have if it was purely in commercial recreation. So that's why, that's the main reason why we would, why we stick behind the idea of having that as commercial recreation reserve rather than the suggestion of changing it to commercial recreation. If it's a commercial recreation, exactly the same land use that exists, most existing resort land, which is already owned. Okay, so that's what you see in two D. Yep.
Right.
That area is currently commercial recreation reserve. Is that correct?
It's a variety of things. There's, there's some of it is reserved, some of it is commercial reserve. There may be some other reserve categories and some of it's commercial recreation. But the general, the general principle is things that we think are like, are feasible in the next twenty years should be a category and things which are not really likely to happen in the next twenty years. But we want to signpost that. But we want to signpost that, you know, they are a viable use and we kind of generally support that use would fall under reserve category.
I have a question on two D as well. Can this be considerable or similar to the future reference as far as with the potential future parkland, the solution was to have a different map and notate it there. Can this one have that solution?
You could do that, but we're actually proposing a real, um, a real change in land use or a particular land use category. Uh, the, the parks thing was a little different. Um, because we don't have that now, we're not proposing a change right now. We're saying these are things we could change in the future. Um, but I mean, I see what you're saying. I mean, you could, one of the early proposals, it all gets changed to open space. And when a viable project comes up, then we discuss changes. Um, and there was pushback on that because I think justifiably, because one of the questions was, um, from people who've been looking at this in the past was, you know, if there isn't an indication that the community is kind of considering it, then it looks like a huge uphill battle and it's going to be hard to get investment. By doing this, it sits both between, it protects what is, it gives a process for changing it, but it also gives an indication that that's a change the community would be happy to consider. If you like, it basically just puts the, you know, it's a, we're already halfway there as opposed to starting from just open space.
Any other questions to Brian?
Um, would you consider, um, adding some extra, um, to some extra to the commercial recreation reserve that kind of, um, codifies that if you not codify it, but specifies that that is the aim of, of locking this land up like that. That it, um, will promote the process of, of a reasonable um, offer in the future, if you will, a reasonable plan in the future. I think some people are concerned, again, with the perception of the uphill battle. And I think that, um, we can say right now, a lot of us can say, we'd, we'd really love to see another something up there in the valley that is commercial recreation and consistent with our valley. And I think that if we were able to say commercial recreation reserve holds this land to be used for that or something like that might give us a, um, um, uh, might give us a, a good way, a good path forward.
I can't remember exactly how it's phrased now, but that, that's the intent now. Yeah, so, um, if it's not clear enough, then I'm sure that's a clarity, that's on, uh, definitely adds a clarity too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Think I don't hear any more, then on to the board.
Okay, so now we're, we're only down to two, so we're almost finished. Um, so two A, uh, the so-called Mitten Forest Loop or area north of the airport or Glacier Village, or whatever we want to call it, Glacier Creek Village. Um, there's, we do not support the change to mixed use from the proposed open space. Um, and there are several reasons for this, mostly the, uh, we got a very strong message, not a unanimous message. Uh, there were many, uh, there were a number of people, uh, some of which were not actually employed as managers at the resort. Um, to, uh, to keep it as a mixed use. Um, I think the main things there are, there's been since at least 2018, probably longer. Uh, but I'd be very aware of it, since 2018, there's been a lot of community discussion about the use of that area solely for recreation and for, uh, some, somewhere between primitive, um, and developed trails. Um, and everyone who'd been paying any attention to the local process has been following that for the last six years or so. Um, the argument I've heard before from, um, some parties that they weren't aware of that, I just do not find a, uh, a, so it doesn't pass the smoke test. Um, it's been clear, that's an area that's been under, uh, considerable, uh, discussion about recreational alone use. The, the community was pretty strongly, very strongly, um, in support of making that open space. We had several proposals where it was different categories of commercial or mixed use, and it was very strong opposition to that from the community. Um, the proposal, the, the interaction with the area master plan from resorts is again a complexity here. Um, I understand that, you know, a few months ago, that area master plan was agreed and it was agreed very explicitly under the conditions that, um, it was based on the plan from 95, by the plan written in 93 and 94, uh, not the plan the community has been spending the last six, seven years. So it is based purely on decisions made 40 or 35, 30 odd years ago, not on the active community discussion now and over the last several years. Um, I think it is a mistake to, given that this development is planned between 2032, 2037, something in that timeframe. Um, it will effectively be, be, uh, based on decisions made 40 odd years ago and in 45 years beforehand, ignoring all the community input in the last, in the previous decade. And that actually just seems fundamentally wrong in terms of the process. Um, now, all of these things are proposal now. Um, there's no, there isn't, things can be changed in the future when there are specific projects and there are specific things coming ahead of it. But I think a lot of the, you know, this particular development is predicated on decisions made a long while ago for a different set of purposes, under a different set of conditions, when it was seen as part of the staging towards a much larger upstream, um, valley development. Um, so I haven't, I've looked at some of the documentation from around the 93, 95 time period when, uh, the original plan was put together and the discussions of that area were all about, um, you know, steps towards a much larger, uh, development further up valley. It wasn't about enhancements or, or changes, definitely wasn't the housing. Um, but it wasn't about, uh, uh, development in the existing location. So I don't know what the full discussion was around that time. Uh, I've only got some documentation, but, um, it does not seem to align with the discussions that are happening now. So we think the community has been very clear about what, um, the intent is for that area. And, uh, therefore as a project team, we're going to stand behind them. So, and just say it should be retained as, uh, as open space, not changed to mixed use. Um, two B, and I've got another comment on both of these, but I've addressed two B separately. Uh, two B also, there's a lot of, there was a lot of feedback, um, when that was proposed as an area for residential development. Um, there's, well, there is some nearby, uh, infrastructure. We already have problems with, uh, roads, uh, with the line of the moat, and this would be a significant increase to the traffic on Timberline. Uh, so there were concerns about that, about how access would work. Um, about the, uh, about building, you know, in the, both in the, um, you know, the, in the trade areas and also in the, uh, in the large amounts of, uh, of wetland in the area. Um, and with both this and two A, um, the comments from the planning department were really about increasing the amount of land used for housing. And they're right, we need more land use for housing. Um, we do, I do not currently have an accurate, a detailed estimate. We have an approximate number, but, uh, staff have gone through and done the full analysis. But in the proposal as submitted, uh, it was somewhere between about 450 and 500 acres were allocated towards future, um, residential and commercial development. So development for residential and mixed use. Um, the detailed analysis from Huddle said that we would, in the 10 to 20 year time range, we need somewhere between basically 30 and 50 acres, 30 and 60 acres of additional residential development. Um, and another 24 of commercials. So let's round them up, let's use the higher number, say, say around 100 or so. So the predictions, uh, from the economic analysis, so we need about 100, 100 acres more development. We proposed 500. Um, what two A would do is change that from about 500, 525. Uh, I don't think that's a material change, given the, we've already, already over, over, uh, we've over identified it by a factor of five or so. Um, two B would add another 100 acres, um, or so. But again, it's not in an area that's that easy to develop and we already have plenty of land. It's probably no harder to develop than that might be. So these seem, um, if the whole only purpose of the plan was to increase the amount of developable land by the maximal amount, I would support that. But that is not the purpose of the plan. The purpose of the plan is to allow for reasonable and economic development of the resources we need while not destroying the fundamental economic driver of good, which is the environment. So yes, you could pave everything, uh, but you would see staff, you know, they would basically kill off a lot of tourism. So, um, you know, the people come here because of the beauty of the place and you can't, you have to do some balance between the two. There is some of them to trade up. So two A and two B are fundamentally trying to maximize something that we think should be a balance. Um, and honestly, if we need, you know, again, the prediction or the, the, um, the economic analysis, uh, talks about, you know, let's say a couple of hundred houses, a couple of hundred more housing units. We already have 350 for short term rent. So it's not that there aren't housing units here, it's that they're not being used for people to live in. Uh, that is a, a, a much more economic solution, uh, than, uh, than just simply maximizing the amount of additional, uh, land use for development. So for all those reasons, uh, getting opposed to, uh, the changes recommended by planning in two A and two B. Um, there is other changes, could, there could be other changes proposed by, you know, other agencies or departments of the immunity or individual assembly members. I'm sure that will happen. Um, but these are the ones we're aware of now. Questions?
Okay, any questions that follow the last two or overall from everyone? Please go ahead. Hey, Willam?
Uh, yeah, just a question about the commercial recreation reserve. So wouldn't the GCR two still need to go as an area master plan, develop master plan, which would be in front of the public?
Um, it depends, it's not, the area top, I don't think is G, isn't, is G C, is?
Yeah, G C, GCR two, which requires, so it's still need to go in front of the public.
So an area master plan doesn't need to go to the assembly?
Correct, it would need to be assembly.
So the point here is, there's two, there's two issues. There are things which could be done purely administratively under permits by H L B. There are also things that could be done purely by an appointed, uh, by a pointed process without touching any elected representatives. The difference between having a reserve and not reserve is it has to go through a body with, uh, elected representatives, with what nothing else does.
But if it were to be disposed of by the H L B, that's not going to go through someone. You're saying?
No, for all that disposal, but for, uh, if it's just a question of putting it in a vast amount without attaching land disposal, which I don't think you would do, because you probably won't ownership of. But, but the current, the current structure, if it, if it stays commercial, if it was commercial recreation of the law, it does not have to go through a, uh, an assembly or an elected body. And it, there's a lot that can be done under permit, uh, without ever going to be assembled. So the boundary, I mean, clear cut, you could clear out a whole area, H L B program, it's not required enough to go to any, anything beyond H L B itself.
But would the H L B take the data? Let's help.
Sorry, what do you mean?
Would the H L B be the only one entitled to just go through a permit process for that?
Um, they could, they could issue a permit to, to other entities. I mean, there's a, there's the theoretical arguments. Theoretically, this gives us protection which we do not have in theory, it stays as a commercial. There are many situations where it can stay under commercial recreation, you still end up with something. If there is a true land disposal happening, it can still go to be assembled. Um, but it's a last step in the process, if it's a land disposal. Um, if it's a change in, um, in categorization use, it's an early step in the process. So there are several reasons why this is a, I would argue, a better protection of community intent. If it stays as recreational. You asked a great question, buddy. And that, my answer is based on my understanding, I'll have to do a bit more research, a bit more.
Yeah.
Any other questions so far? Now, I think it might be a good idea to go to the resolution from planning and zoning. Might not have anything brand new, but I think you have it, you can share your screen.
Do you have it?
It was, um, from this past Monday, so a week ago today. But we, none of us saw it for days, but they normally pass a resolution. They're meeting their consent agenda, so they passed it. And don't believe it had major changes from their findings.
Wasn't quite prepared to, uh, drag it out.
Oh, well, that, it's up to us two to determine the action. For today, our business is just discussing this and determining an action for what to do between now and October. Do you see anything on there, Brian, that's different from the planning zoning's findings from previous week?
I can see a little more detail from what is on there. I, I got this when I was driving back from town.
Okay.
Didn't have enough time to read it while I stopped for Powerball work.
No, no.
And, uh, it, uh, it, it covers all of the, all of the, um, most of the, most of the points, um, that are, are dealt with in what would be our, our two A through F. Um, and one A and B. And then I didn't see, um, and then the ones that were actions consistent with our plan, there's nothing about that. Excuse, no, excuse me, they didn't mention the language throughout Road Baby two, I see. Trying to see about how I can get this to.
I, I'm about to join the, yeah, I'll get ready to present it on the screen in a second.
From what I have read, and I didn't finish it, it was pretty similar to everything here. They hit on all of that and what Brian just said. It did mention road baby.
Okay, that's the, that's the. Turn your mic off there.
So they made those findings under A, uh, so they, yes, their second finding is that we repeatedly asked for housing in Gerwood. And their role is to help the community achieve that within the scope of this plan. Bring that up right away.
This is the establishing of facts, so, um, the next part that really talks about recommendations. On section B.
Right, right there, yeah.
So if you go through this, item one is the, is, uh, describes the, I described the process we went through with planning to come up with new language law or a clarification of language, which is the buttons. And a proposal for dealing with their concerns about potential future park. Um, section two, A is the, uh, Mitten area. B is the Virgin Creek area. C is the, um, is the discussion about basically how we, how we determine whether to use, whether we use the 500 year floodplain or the 100 year floodplain in South Townsite. Um, D is the commercial recreation reserve. Um, E is the, um, Winter Creek extension, which we agree with. And F was, sorry, this is one other item which was introduced, which was a, um, is just an alignment of, uh, making sure the, uh, use categories align with the whole three plans, which makes perfect sense. Um, three was the issue about adding, which we also agree with, about adding a comment about tsunami risk in all Gerwood. Uh, four was a better phrasing about, um, the, whether roads should be paved with other alternative surfacing. I think their phrasing, the suggestive phrasing is much better than ours. Ours was a negative, it's a, it's a positive, so I think that's better. Um, five was just a very small clarification on, um, language around airport use. Use of the airport property and six, what we requested about making um some technical edits. Because some of the, there's some typos and a couple of grammar mistakes. I think one sentence is repeated. Some people got them on photo credits.
Okay.
So really, the, the issue here is, there were a couple of issues that um. Planning requested, planning certainly didn't support, and then really is just again, two A, here, two A, two B, two C, two D.
Thank you, Mike. And uh from the Mashen Girdwood meeting as well, and all the meetings in the last three weeks. It seems like as representatives, the appropriate uh. To me, a very apparent option is to support what the community has said in the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan. And uh when we, when Girdwood, or when the supervisors um. In the meeting, see this response, uh just reaffirm that the community would like. Uh the plan is presented for those four and acknowledge the, the planning meeting with. Huddle to clarify the buffers. Parkland future having a map and then reiterating why it's important to have a recreation reserve, which is two D, so. Anything else? Now you have a meeting soon to uh for land use today, so this might be on there, but this is our chance to decide anything. I don't, I know it's a special meeting and we uh, we could make action, but I don't know if we have a quorum to vote, so. We just have, Kyle?
So land use can move action. Um G B S, you do not have a quorum right now, extra Q, so. But they can make a recommendation to you at this meeting, which then you can consider at your next meeting.
Okay. That sounds good. Brian?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to think that we for once kind of have time on our side moving into this when we have a a November. Um assembly to prepare for and have the uh um good fortune of being able to. Run ideas and and comment through Land Use Committee to get further community input. And then um put out a uh, a, a resolution. Um that, that um takes in all that that Girdwood wants in in the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Brian? Yeah, I don't have to call on you, you can just say something. Okay. All right. Do we feel like we discussed it? And you take action at any of your next meetings?
Yeah.
You can, we can. Uh, all right, if everyone feels like. We talked it through, we can go to the next item on the agenda, which is public comment. Thank you very much, Mike, for all of your time with us. Uh persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. We're limited to three minutes. And the subject must not be on the agenda. Anyone here for public comment? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Moved and seconded by Brian. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thanks, Kyle and Margaret.
Thank you.